Okay, it's 2:00. And I would like to get this meeting underway. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, November 8, 2018. It's 2:00 PM. We're in the Arlene Strain Community Room of the DOS Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. Item number one on the agenda is call it order, which I've just done. So, the second part of that would be the invocation. So, I'll ask Mr. Baker to conduct that, please.
You bet. Please bow with me. We're very thankful for this time of year as we get to the end of our semester. We're thankful for this college. We pray for the safety of our students, faculty, and staff the next few weeks, that they'll finish strong. We are thankful to you in the season of Thanksgiving, and this place being something we're very thankful for. Thank you for our board. Please help them as they deliberate today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Stand and out. Lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Be seated. Item two on the agenda is open forum. How do we stack up on that?
We have none.
Thank you for that. Item three is president's report. President Farmer, recognitions, employee notices.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and provide employee notices. Recognizations. Weatherford College recently hosted hundreds of 4th graders at the annual STEM Mania events held at both the Weatherford and Wise County campuses. On Thursday, October 25th, Weatherford College Wise County welcomed more than 875 students from 14 schools in Wise, Jack, and Palapinto Counties for their day-long event. Students had the opportunity to visit 63 different activities related to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The next day, nearly 900 students from Parker County schools attended the STEM Mania event at the Weatherford campus. I would like to recognize Dr. Lisa Welch, Dr. Allison Stamatys, Becky Byrd, and an army of volunteers who made the event such a huge success. I want to pay special recognition to the Wise County Associate Degree Nursing Students who garnered enough donations to send each 4th grader home from the WCWC event with a bicycle helmet. Nearly 900 Wise County 4th graders now have new bicycle helmets. So, great job, WCWC Nursing Students. I also want to recognize Becky Byrd and team on Weatherford College Wise County's 17th Annual College Night for area juniors and seniors and their parents. There were close to 90 students who checked in, and many of those students brought their parents and siblings to the event. We had 30 different colleges and universities in attendance to provide students with admission information. I would like to recognize Mr. Vance Christie and his army of volunteers for a highly successful FFA Invitational Leadership Development Conference. On November 2nd, we had hundreds of students from 40 school districts across the state participate in the FFA competition. Many of these FFA students will likely select WC as their college of choice. Great job, Mr. Christie and team. Recognition is certainly in order for Cal Lewiston, Ron Pluckett, Dr. Hayong Song, and the WC Jazz Band for their performance at the Weatherford College Fall Jazz Concert. They were fantastic. The Weatherford College Women's Rodeo Team recently won first place at the Texas Tech University Rodeo while the men's team finished fourth. At the halfway point in the rodeo season, the WC Women's Team is in second place in the region, trailing Tarleton, while the WC Men's Rodeo Team is ranked fifth. Keep up the great work, WC Rodeo Team. Both men's and women's basketball are off to a great start. We've had wins in both men's and women's the last two nights in a row, and the student athletes are looking good and playing very well as a team. And finally, the WC Nursing Instructional Team has posted exceptional institutional scores on the National Counsel Licensor Examination. During the last accountability year, 125 nursing students tested with a 95.2 pass rate. This is a higher pass rate than Tarrant County College, Midwestern State University, Tarleton State University, the University of Texas at Arlington, North Central Texas College, and Texas Women's University. Dean Kathy Boswell and her team are here today. Would you please stand so we can give you a round of applause? Congratulations. We are very proud of you. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Cal Lewiston has resigned from his department chair position and is returning to a full-time faculty position effective January 1st, 2019. We thank him for his service and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports, which is item number, which are item number four on the agenda?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If aye passes unanimously. Moving to number five, reports. Equities and Athletics Report. Mr. Finley.
Thank you. The Equities and Athletics Report is required for all institutions of higher education that participate in federal student aid programs and have intercollegiate athletic programs. This report is required to be published each October and can currently be found on Weatherford College' main website as well as our WC Athletics site. Additionally, statistics from the report will be available through the Department of Education's Office of Post-Secondary Education's website. The report follows the format provided by the Department of Education and contains data on participation rates by gender, highlights expenses and revenues for each athletic program, and the purpose of this report is intended to make prospective students aware of a school's commitment to providing equitable athletic opportunities for all student athletes. The last page of the report provides a summary. This year's report showed an increase in expenses compared to last year, mainly in the form of athletically, athletic-related aid for women's athletes. Our current male participation rates in athletes is disproportionate to our student male bodies population. However, the increase in female-related athletic aid and recruitment expenses does indicate WC's commitment to providing equitable opportunities for our student athletes. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Finley? All right. Thank you, Ms. Finley. Under Reports, item B, Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While Larry is pulling up our PowerPoint for the Weatherford College Strategic Plan, I would like to add that I don't deserve credit for this strategic plan. Dr. Arlene Atkins and the Cabinet worked very hard in developing this plan. It's something that they do deserve full credit for, and I've worked with them, and we are collaboratively going to present that plan. So, I want to make sure that it's noted that Dr. Atkins deserves some praise for her hard work on this initiative. I also wanted to add that as we transition from the 2018 strategic plan, looking forward into 2019, that I would like to work collaboratively with the board on a strategic plan where the board and the president collaboratively set some overarching goals for the institution and then bring those goals to the Cabinet and the leadership team for further details and fleshing out procedures associated with those overarching goals. So, our strategic goal, number one, will be presented by Mr. Endy. It is basically the academic master plan that leads to student success. So, with that, I would ask Mr. Endy to address the first slide there for program improvements.
All right. Well, as you can see, there are five highlighted areas. We've done a lot of things over the last year, but these are main highlight items for our instructional and student services area. First, the Guided Pathways Initiative, which Dr. Cantrell's been leading. Its primary focus are developing pathways for students to complete in an efficient way their degrees and their certificates, and then effective advising so they know how to do that. And we've gone a long way toward that. It ties nicely with the THECB Field of Study Transfer Degrees. The state has identified, at this point, about a dozen programs, and they've started from the highest in demand and worked their way down through what are the least, less popular majors. And they've identified the 18 credit hours that are considered Field of Study to offset the 42 credit hours that are considered Core Curriculum, so that a student working toward a 60-credit-hour AA or AS degree knows exactly which courses to take, to complete, and that they are guaranteed to transfer to all state-supported institutions of higher education, four-year and also two-years. So, if they're leaving us and going to another college, which they, we hope they won't, but if they are, those credit hours are guaranteed to transfer in and from those other institutions out. So, it's going to help our students a lot, and we anticipate increasing degree completers, which is a very high priority for us. Along the way, as we were in a meeting over pathways at Houston last fall, we were discussing our foundational-level math course, which is, those of you who remember Math 0301, it's a foundational-level ABE or Adult Basic Education level of math. We had been offering it. The student's success rate from that level into college algebra was low and not improving. And we discovered that our partners at WISD could offer those courses at reasonable cost and get those students associated with programs that would get them into workforce fields and help to offset the cost of that tuition. So, in our partnership, we have, they were already teaching those courses here, by the way. We've no longer teach that basic level of mathematics. We've given that to WISD, and they're seeing success not only in getting them through mathematics, but getting people into workforce programs. That's brand-new this fall, and we're seeing a lot going on there. In terms of new programs, one of the more exciting things that's going on is that Valerie Hopkins and her staff over at Mineral Wells are starting a barbering program. We put sinks in. Dr. Cantrell helped us with funding to get all that set up, and we got the, I think CBRE did the construction work. So, we're good to go, and we're going to be doing barbering over there. So, those of you who've been heading to Mineral Wells for your hair, it's open to all of us. And one of the exciting things on the instructional side is that there are two archaeological digs that are going on. This is very opportunistic. One is us uncovering a Columbian-era mammoth, which Ms. Googe has been working on, and also a cabin, a local excavation, a little bit newer than the mammoth. And so, we've got students engaged in active research archaeological digs from Weatherford College. So, a lot of exciting things going on. Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Endy. Our second strategic goal deals with our facility improvements, and for those improvements, I've asked Dr. Andrew Cantrell to update us on both the building and grounds improvements and some of our HVAC additions.
We've had a very busy year this last year. CBRE, Johnny Emmons, who's over the Carter property and the rodeo property, and also Vance Christie that has worked hard on, in the agriculture area, have all pitched in, and we've maintained ourselves as well as facilitate some repairs that we weren't planning on because of storms. As far as the buildings and the facilities that are laid out here are pretty much a summary, but I'll go through some of those. The DOS Student Center, we started off the year with a bang last year with a major storm that pulled the roof off, and we had three weeks to get ready for classes to start. They pulled it together and along with emptying three inches of water out of the whole building, they put a new rooftop on, they remodeled it, and we were ready to go for classes. We also reworked the restrooms in this facility, in the front of the facility. Outkick Fine Arts, we did stage. I think Mr. Endy was very instrumental in helping with a lot of that. Stage arch repair, painting in different areas, trying to get ready for the 150th. Carpet was put in the music room, and a brand-new fire alarm replacement. Betty Jo Graver Gymnasium and the Roger Williams Baseball Field. We put new metal floors, I mean, new mats, new floor installed. We put a new boiler in the gymnasium. The mats were put on the dugouts at the ballpark. Installation of new LED lighting on the exterior of baseball field house. In the Liberal Arts Building, well, I'll go back to Calt Village. We always do quite a bit. We laminated 35 rooms down there, the floors, flooring in there. And also, we had to repair the water-fire-alarm system there that the storm hit us with in the middle of the winter. The Liberal Arts Buildings, we finished up the replacement of all the staircases on the buildings, and all buildings, all four of the buildings, I believe, the men's building, the fine arts, the Calt's Hall, and those were all finished up. Education Center at Mineral Wells, the steel doors, or new steel front doors were put in. Lighting was, some lighting, new lighting was installed in the welding shop. Weatherford College Wise County, we also had damage there with our roof, and so we're still in the process right now of replacing the whole roof of all Wise County buildings. But I can gladly say we're 65% complete at this time. We're on time even with all the weather and the rain that's been there. And many, the only good thing about all the storms that we've had this last year, we've had insurance to pay for those. That's a good thing. Carter Property and College Farm, I know that land was cleared for crops and cattle. Vance Christie took care of a lot of that, and then Johnny Emmons himself re-crowned the rodeo arena at the West Farm. And then the parking lots were all restriped. So, there's been a lot of work to take place, as well as, on the next slide, all these were buildings where we had to go in and replace the air conditioning units. There's a lot more that we could discuss, and I'm sure Rhonda could add to this right now, but that we're just touching on the main spots at this time and letting you know. Now, one of the things that we started on this summer was the landscaping, and that's not mentioned. We've had, well, we had a storm in the spring with a major tree debris cleanup from the March freeze. We had to remove a live oak tree on the west side of campus due to that storm. Planning, we've had planting of three trees. We had to remove 18, we treated 18 live oak trees for oak wilt, but we had to remove 14 trees due to those oak welts, and we're in the process right now of coming back in with landscaping. I think today we saw a change campus out there. We've still got a lot to do, but I'm very pleased with where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Appreciate all of your hard work and the hard work of CBRE. Our third strategic goal deals with student success and student services. So, Mr. Adam Finley has been asked to address some of the accomplishments associated with student service improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Several strategic changes have occurred in student services since 2016, solid response to the comprehensive survey or the omnibus survey that was administered this past spring semester. The survey results and discussion were presented at the July board meeting. And while the student satisfaction results were high from the survey, use and awareness of institutional resources were not as prominent as we would have preferred. The survey was helpful in identifying this issue. However, student use of institutional resources has been a known issue. And to assist in increasing services used by students within student services, this last fall semester, a major change occurred that involved moving the financial aid office to the lower level of the student services building. This move allowed for the creation of a one-stop-shop aligning admissions, registration, financial aid, and business services, all in a centrally-located area. A secondary benefit of this move transitioned the office of accommodations to the upper level of student services, allowing better access for our students who have mobility difficulties. In addition to these adjustments, the Career and Transfer Center, recently relocated to the Welcome Center, this move allowed for an expansion of space and services provided by the Career and Transfer Center, which will assist the institution in the implementation of guided pathways. Secondly, the transition will allow for incoming future students to observe current students, faculty, staff, advisors, all engaging together. Lastly, incorporating the Career and Transfer Center into the Welcome Center allowed space to create the Student Development and Wellness Center located in the DOS building. The focus of this office will be to provide services towards student life clubs, organizations, and personal student council. Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Our fourth strategic goal deals with technology improvements, and here to address many of those technology improvements is Mr. Greg Schrader.
It's a very exciting and busy time right now at the college with respect to implementing new systems, systems that are going to greatly improve student experience as well as faculty and staff. Probably the largest project we have going right now is our new ERP system, which is Colleague, that you're aware of. For the last couple of months and then to the end of the year, we've been busy implementing the core foundational pieces of that system, so that early next calendar year, we will really start rolling out the different functional areas, starting with the finance applications, the student services, human resources, et cetera. So, it's really going to get to be a fast-paced and exciting time. In fact, training is going on today for some parts of it. In addition to the ERP system, another project led by Mr. Butler is to expand our campus lab suite of products. We already use them for outcomes assessment, but we can get a lot more benefit by expanding in other integrated products associated with the suite for student outcomes and measure their outcomes, course evaluations, which can be done directly from within our learning management system that we have now, as well as giving Mr. Butler a much more robust capability with analytics across all the data of the college. Another project that we have going on right now, led by Mr. Purvis, is within financial aid. We acquired a product called Campus Logic, and what that is going to do is basically streamline the financial aid process from students from A to Z. It's going to be a much more intuitive and user-friendly approach to that, and Mr. Purvis is very excited about that. And another two things that we've accomplished recently is working with Dr. Locke in distance learning, is we've implemented a lockdown browser called Respondus. And basically, what that does is lets instructors choose to implement it within our learning management system so that when the students take the test, when they're in the browser environment, they will not be able to get out of that, perhaps to go, you know, look up an answer or something of that nature. And I'm sure you're all aware of the new digital sign that we have on campus. Aside from a few initial issues that we had with installation, I think it's working 100% right now and looks great. So, ahead, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader, and I applaud your efforts. I would add to his comments that a lot of these new software additions are very cost-effective moves, far more cost-effective for us to add a few new programs than it is to add to labor costs associated with new personnel positions. So, I applaud all of your collective efforts. Strategic Goal Number Five deals with our off-campus instructional facilities and our community relations, and we're going to split that up with Mr. Dan Curley commenting first on a slide related to off-campus sites, followed by Mr. Brent Baker talking about community partnerships and programs. Mr. Curley.
Thank you. First, I want to point out that all of these slides that we've been seeing this morning, this afternoon, were generated by Dr. Arlene Atkins and was in collaboration with faculty, staff, students. So, these are not, these didn't arrive in vacuums. And in particular, this slide was generated in connection with a concern that activities that were not on this campus didn't feel like they had adequate communication. They felt that they were not included adequately. So, what I'm going to do, though, is I'm kind of going beyond that to point out that our service area includes Parker County and that to talk about off-campus, we can have, we do have off-campus activities within the district at Mineral Wells. So, this is probably more narrow than we would want it to be. And inasmuch as we are concerned about off-campus, I want to direct our attention to out-of-district activities and would want to propose that we have a written statement of our positions on dealing with out-of-district services, off-campus services. All right. The thing that was just passed out is what we are looking at and becoming our policy or position on off-campus, out-of-district. So, if you take a little minute there to read it. Where to actually publish this has not been decided. Didn't want to try to deal with that until you had an opportunity to look at the, at these positions and determine whether or not it reflects what you would want to do and think about the implications of it when we speak in terms of the fact that not, that we would not want to spend, and our policy would be not to spend Parker County taxes and that if they wanted activities that they needed to provide, like Wise County did, the facilities within which we could actually transact business. So, if you have any questions about the paper, then, or if you do, let me know, and I'll try to answer those questions for you.
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Curley. We'll open it up to further questions here in just a moment for any of our presenters. Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker, if you would please talk to us briefly about community partnerships and programs.
You bet, President Farmer. Thank you. I feel like our college has done a great job of partnering with our community on an ongoing basis. We probably have dozens of examples. This is a handful of examples that are new things that we have accomplished this past year. Our college is now in a partnership with the city of Weatherford to provide a fire science training facility, where the city is providing the property and the college is providing a modular classroom and storage facility, and it seems to be working very well. You've heard about the 20th anniversary celebration for the Alcach Fine Arts Center? That was accomplished in the spring of this past year. Duane Dorrett was a major factor there, and this was a great time to bring in the community, to remind the community of what they have done in fine arts and facilities at our college, highlighted by the Fort Worth Symphony Orchestra that performed on our stage, and it was a great event, the entire month was. Also, another community endeavor this year, the establishment of the Weatherford College Community Coalition. You remember us discussing the issue of students that were hungry a few months ago. Well, this precipitated a great discussion, and now we have this WC Community Coalition to connect students with community support services that can help them, and I think it's really shown a great commitment to community service and to community partnerships as well. For the third consecutive year, we hosted the superintendents from across our service area to strengthen partnerships, to address critical issues leading to student success with our ISDs, an area that's becoming increasingly important in a large portion of our enrollment. And finally, our SESQUIS Centennial Steering Committee, for over a year now, has put together a wonderful program for next year, celebrating our 150th anniversary, and that has been a collaboration with many community members outside of this college, the city, the chamber, and many others, and we're going to have a more detailed report on that next month. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. And our sixth and final strategic goal, as you can see displayed, deals with our people, and I chose to assume responsibility for this particular goal and present to you because I perceive it, while all the other goals are critically important, I perceive this to be the most important. In my mind, we desperately need to take care of our people, our faculty and our staff who are closest to students and who most directly impact student success. Been working with Tanya Edwards, Faculty Senate President, and the Faculty Senate regarding the salary study that was proposed, and the general consensus is that we have the knowledge that our salaries are below state average, that we have that knowledge, and rather than spending tens of thousands of dollars on a formal study, we're gathering their input and trying to reallocate some of those existing dollars to rectifying the problems, and we're going to be coming to you with some recommendations next month regarding adjunct pay and some other issues, and so we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I do want to praise Faculty Senate and Faculty Senate leadership for their collaborative efforts. The second bullet there, the Presidential Update, is an email that has been distributed each month. We're about to send out the November Weatherford College Update email following this board meeting. The third bullet is a monthly email that Crystal Worley sends out that talks about the college events and activities for each month, and so it provides a very nice summary that enhances communication and answers a lot of questions for people. And then finally, the technology furnishings and enhancements in the faculty development room up in the library. There have been a modest investment in some technology upgrades to try to enhance professional development activities for faculty and staff in our library. That concludes the strategic plan update, and at this time, I would open the floor for any questions that you, Mr. Chair, or any of the distinguished members of the board might have on any of our goals.
I have a question. Where are we with Southern Association, with our accreditation process?
Well, we are preparing for our next reaffirmation, and Dr. Atkins leads that endeavor. And Dr. Atkins, if you don't mind, give us a very brief update on that topic.
Our fifth here monitoring report is due April 1st. Currently, we're working on a substantive change for veterinary technology. Our compliance certification is due in March of 2021. Now, to prepare FABs, starting in the fall, we'll start choosing our QEP topic, we'll start developing the SACS steering committee and the leadership team, because it's about a two-year process to get ready for submission of the compliance certification, and also the visit follows in September to November of 2021. A reaffirmation will occur in 2022. So we've got a lot of SACS activity going on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Other questions?
What's the timeline on goal number six? I, I think that's, not that, I mean, everything's important on these strategic goals, but to me, that's one of them that we really do need to push forward as quickly as we can to get the information so we can start taking action on that.
Yes, sir. It has been a priority for us. I have already alluded to the collaboration that I've received from faculty and Faculty Senate. I would add to that, that Mr. Indy and Dr. Cantrell have been very helpful as well in analyzing some of our data, our labor costs, our available resources to develop a fiscally responsible incremental step towards addressing this serious issue, and we do expect to have that completed this month, and again, come to you with some recommendations at our next board meeting on December 13.
That's great.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Can you comment?
I just had a question. In regards to the, the faculty salaries, and I'm, I'm like Mac, that should be a high priority for us if we, if we need to retain what we've got. What about the staff and everybody below faculty? Do they have a representative on this?
They have a council.
Yeah, we're talking about employees. We're talking about all the employees.
Every one. And as a matter of fact, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because we're actually developing a plan that would be a flat compensation that would disproportionately benefit those at the bottom end of the pay scale. So it would, it would incrementally help staff, more so than faculty or administration.
Well, you know, I'm just a, we need to look at everybody.
We sure do.
Everybody's important.
We appreciate your position on that.
I love the digital new sign.
I like the vibe show when that roundabout comes.
We're having to replace the air conditioning in the softball fieldhouse already.
Well, they're constant, Rodney, you could probably speak to that.
Yes, we did, we did have to replace it. That's a smaller unit, it's more like a residential top unit, so.
Pretty new facility.
Yeah. Six years.
Six years after the five-year warranty.
Probably run that thing constantly.
That's a habit of mine. I wore it, he was gone.
What else, Roger? Anything else?
This math that we're talking about, is this gonna, I mean, we all know the hardest thing that incoming freshmen have is the math part. So I have always been an advocate of coordination between what we do require, the requirement to pass the test versus the requirements for high school people. And I've, I've always said I would love to have a class for the people who have already passed the STAR test, but may be deficient in what they need for our math. Is this what we're trying to transition to?
I would say first, simply, yes, we're trying to transition that way. And it probably isn't today, but I would love to fill the board in if we're, if Dr. Farmer agrees, at what we're doing with college prep courses in high schools to get to college-level mathematics and what we've done in math pathways alone, which is a lot of the math, which is a lot of our pathways project. And today probably isn't the day to go through all of that, but you being a former high school instructor, you know that the high schools have dealt with college preparation and the test versus what they actually need to know to succeed. And the state has made some alterations in the way that they perceive that from the legislative level, translated through the TEA and THCCB, and there's a lot going on there, or if you prefer, I could speak with you individually about it, but we're doing a lot right now, not only with WISD, but system-wide because of changes that have come from the legislature and from our governing bodies, our accrediting bodies of the TEA and THCCB.
And then are we going to expand this outside of WISD into the PUBLs, the PUCs?
WISD is a service area provider, not simply for the Weatherford School District, and I believe we're still, we're already doing this indicator where they have the opportunity to do them themselves. What it is, is the switching of the math course, which was a college course for no credit at the college level, to an organization that can provide that same level. We acknowledge that they've done it, and they have other educational opportunities besides mathematics that they can engage in that helps them to get into the workforce. And because those other opportunities are associated with the workforce, there's funding usually for them. They have to pay straight tuition. We get no contact hour funding for that level of instruction. So this is a win-win for everyone.
So if we get no contact hour funding, if you're taking a remedial math course in order to be able to take a college algebra course?
In that level, no, no. The level of just full of college algebra, we get funding for that, they can get financial aid for that, but at the level that we're talking about, which was a level beneath that, basically, if the student is at the eighth grade level or lower in mathematics competency, we were teaching that as a foundational level, and the high schools, the ISD system is now handling that.
I just think it's a whole lot easier to get them caught up in English than it is in math.
Absolutely.
Well.
Statistically speaking, more students struggle with mathematics.
College algebra, we'd be glad to get it, but, you know.
And part of the reason is, students who struggle in mathematics at the most profound level also typically struggle with language, and it is language as masters of calculation that keeps them from succeeding. And we have people who have been doing this for years, not that our math faculty weren't, but that's what they're specializing in, and they're getting, we think it's going to be better service. We look forward to providing you the data on it.
Well, is there a male, female difference here in the math competency or math makeup?
There's an overall difference in the composition of our institution, male to female, so.
In other words, y'all.
Are females, are you asking females tend to be more prepared than males across the board?
Or vice versa?
I wouldn't quote that, because I don't have the statistics right in front of me, but my general sense is that female students have, is it a year? Female students tend to outperform male students in that, but I don't know from statistics.
I haven't looked at that in a while, so I can't speak accurate.
How about if we pull the data up and tell you?
Well, that's kind of interesting, in that we're trying to get more, more women into science.
Yes.
You know, we need more women in science, and, but yet they are just as well-prepared in math as males are.
Get that Vet Tech program on.
So what, some kind of disconnect there, I'm not knowing what it is. There's some colleges or some universities that have clubs within them that, where the, where the women's students wear, they take a coding class, they wear a little badge that says "I code" just to show off that they, they do things that males traditionally have done. I, that's not exactly in this realm of what we're talking about exactly, but it has to do with the math, math.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments?
I have one more question.
All right.
In Coyote Village, are we still looking at security cameras?
Chief Stone, anybody? As far as I know, security cameras are still go. This summer. I knew that we're still working on it.
I'm not so sure, but what, the world that we live in today, we might not need security cameras at all entrances.
I agree.
It looks like this summer. I agree totally with you on that. We would love to have security cameras everywhere on this campus. It's definitely an incentive.
It's a priority, it's going to happen.
Okay. Well, I wanted to talk a minute about the service area, because I, I think that that's, that's one of those issues that we kind of take for granted that the, that the taxing mechanism on that is kind of what it is, and, and so I, I think in the long run, we talked about it before in various ways, but I think the, the goal needs to be to get as many participants inside the area into the taxing scheme, because I, and I, I don't think that I, I've been very good in trying to lead us into, to moving into that discussion, because the discussion's got to go beyond just here in Parker County. It's got to, it, it's got to include all of, all of the area, and, and we, we're, right now, we're fighting to try to pull all that together and make it work even, make it work better than it has in the past, but I think that we, we do need to have a good, solid statement about that. I think this is a good start, Mr. Curley, and I appreciate that, but there's got to be some work done on that, and honestly, don't know enough about how to get that done, and I think the sooner we kind of start working on that, the, the more likely it is that we can get something accomplished that would pull that, this district together and fund it a lot better.
Right. Well, all due respect, sir, I disagree, because I think that you and Dr. Farmer and Roger have worked us out of a pretty delicate situation in Hood County, and that, that turned around to be pretty positive and, and really follows these guidelines as I read it, you know, because it didn't look good when Lila and I first came on this board, and, and I like the way it's turned out with, with support, you know, and I agree, we really, we need this. We need this in the policy, you know, as a, that'd be my opinion, policy statement in our, in our policy.
Well, I think that's a good comment to make about that, and, and that was something that was, was well-handled, especially by the president, but what I'm talking about, it's a little bit more in-depth, and it's going to take quite a bit of work to, to get that enthusiasm. We don't have any enthusiasm on that right now. Nobody wants any more tax obligations. Anyway, we've pretty well beaten number five into the ground here. We can keep on doing it, but if there's no objection, we'll move to number six. Future agenda items or meetings for us, Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have the 2018-19 financial audit coming next month in December. Item B, our SESQUIS Centennial Update. Our committee chair, Katie Edwards, will be presenting. That committee has worked diligently. I think Sue is on that committee. We appreciate your efforts and several, several others that have contributed. They've been working a long time to put together a very exciting venue of activities. It's going to be a fantastic year, and we're looking forward to that. Agenda item number six, C, adjunct overload compensation. Again, we are going to be bringing that recommendation to you next month. That is an increasingly important issue that you'll be soon provided some data on. Again, Mr. Indy and Dr. Cantrell have been working diligently, and we just about have that prepared, and that will be forthcoming to you shortly for consideration in December. And finally, agenda item six, D, the demand study update. We'll be bringing additional information on that front to you in the month of December.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We're to number seven, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir. As you can see from the list that I sent to you in your packet, it's one of the busiest times of the year as far as extracurricular activities and events, et cetera. We do have a wonderful concert coming up tomorrow night in the Alcach Center. Rick Rainey, who's our primary private voice teacher, will be presenting strings and songs. This will include Sidney Howell, a phenomenal harpist, as well, so ought to be a really nice night of music tomorrow night at the Alcach. We have 10 home basketball games this next month, and that's just basketball nights. A lot of them are double headers, so if you like basketball, this is the right time of year for you. Tons of games coming up, you see the list there, including this coming Saturday afternoon. We have our student art reception, if you want to come support Merlin and her students. They have a brand-new show that is up in Texas Hall, 6 o'clock, November the 12th, and you can visit with those students and congratulate them for their work. Shakespeare, November 15th through the 18th. Our drama department is presenting Hamlet, the classic, and we'd love to see you there for that. We have our coyote chase race 5K and one-mile We have our coyote chase race 5K and one-mile run. This is the 25th anniversary 5K run, and looking forward to that. Also looking forward to Thanksgiving break, to be honest with you, the following week. The offices are closed all week long, and then we get into a ton of activities in late November and December, including a wonderful tradition at Christmas time, December the 10th, selections from Handel's Messiah. Highly recommend you come to that. You might want to come a little early. It usually is pretty packed out for that event. And then our employee awards dinner will be held at the Springs again this year, December the 13th. The board is always invited to attend that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. The next item on the agenda is the close session, and I'm going to announce what that involves so that we can comply with the law. A, consult with college attorney in accordance with Government Code 551071. B, deliberate real property in accordance with Government Code 551072. So we're going to close this open session and go into a close session in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. The time now is 3:10, and we have concluded our close session, and we'll call the open meeting back into session and move to item number 10 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Motion, half-second? Yep. All right.
I love it.
This end of the table wants to go.
All in favor, say aye. You are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and all the.
Yes. Wait a minute, Baker. You got to tell everybody, if Weatherford wins Friday, we go to the playoffs for the first time in.
Eleven years.
And who's counting? And Baker will be on the mic. On what channel?
102.5.
102.5. Y'all need to listen, that game's going to be good.
Chuck FM.
Thanks, Trina.
A little promo.